All right.
Do we have to come out in the executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah, could I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth to come out of executive session. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Diaman?
Yes.
Councilor Follin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Councilor Rose.
By the way, Councilor Caprio is in here, so.
And Don Fuji's not in. Why don't you skip him?
Because I voted for him.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Moving on to Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, Correspondence, Citizen Statements, Unfinished Business, New Business, Citizen Statements and Petitions, Regular Town Council Meeting, Reports of Committees, Boards and Commissions, Permanent Project Building Committee.
They meet on Monday night, but as we all got the email from Mike today that they did have the bid opening on the TBS roof project, so at this time I'd like to, do you have stuff to present on that to us?
I do, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to amend the agenda to add item 13H, TBS roof project.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Follin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, Economic Development Commission?
They met last night, and it was a brief meeting to talk about the site visit, the RFP release, and the notification which is ongoing. I guess I'll save the, or maybe I can do it now, I guess, in terms of the update with the sidewalk, which was planned for today, nine to 11:00. It was not mandatory, it was just an opportunity that the commission thought would be a good opportunity to throw in the RFP, just, and it was really more access to the building. We already heard that one developer had already been on-site to do a preliminary sidewalk, and realizing it's probably early in the process, but we wanted to offer it anyway, where anyone that showed up today, but they've got, most of their information is going to be about, you know, the site, the traffic count, and so forth, so actual site, you know, access to the building will probably come later down the road. So Carrie and I have been working the list, more credit, obviously, to Carrie, there's been tremendous help, Carrie Duquez, the town planner, in making sure that our distribution list of those developers are accurate. We've been, you know, going through the list and confirming emails and calling people and hard-hailing the RFPs to those developers. She filled in a couple of places today, additional calls that developers that weren't on the list that were requesting the RFP, so we're sending those out. And again, the timeline is in your packet for further discussion about the selection committee, if you want to do it tonight, or defer to the meeting on the 19th, that's fine, you have some time and latitude, I just want to give you the schedule, the proposals aren't due until the 29th, so we still have some time. So that was a pretty short meeting last night, but productive anyway. And Joanne was there as well, so I don't know if there's anything I missed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item C, Park and Rec.
They had a special meeting on April 27th specifically to take a vote on the potato cooker for the festival, so that it could come forward to the council. They did, there were four members of the commission present, they voted unanimously to purchase a used cooker if available, if not, to go with a new cooker, and they have a cap on it, and that's later on our agenda. And there are members of the commission here tonight to present that to us. And then the regular meeting will be on the 18th.
Thank you. Item D, Police Commission.
The next meeting of the Police Commission is next Monday, May 11th.
Item E, Fire Commission. I know there's a lot going on with CMed right now, which I think is going to be further on an update with the chief. Item F, Long Range Planning Committee.
The Long Range Planning, we had its first meeting yesterday, I think it was a very productive meeting. We developed the needs in terms of the condition of the town, we actually managed to come up with a draft of a mission statement, and the next step would be starting to develop goals. In order to do that, we feel it's important that we meet with the department heads, so we kind of set up a schedule. Mike's going to work with getting some of the department heads to come, hopefully starting next week. We're going to try to meet every two weeks. We realize we have a big task in front of us, but I think we feel comfortable that we got a lot done. The only thing that's happened that I would like to bring up to the council is, we had one Board of Education member, Lou Paternoster, who has informed me today that when he realizes the scope of this project, that he really needs to decline because of the time commitment. And in addition to that, as a committee, we think that we would like to have two Board of Education members rather than one and an alternate, because it's important that a Board of Education member be at the meetings. So I don't know, can the council, if the council's willing to go along with that, we'd like to add one additional Board of Education member with an alternate.
And the whole premise is just with three people possible, we're hoping to get one to attend the meetings, because they have a big stake in this, and we really need to re-put.
Yeah, at least one.
Yeah, we see, we see two big projects perhaps coming out, but for the Education Department, we feel that there should be more representation. Is that something we have to vote on, or is that something we go ahead and do? The council did form the committee. And the number of people on it? We originally had said five, we had four town council members. Maybe we can amend it, too. You know, I guess what I'd like to ask is, can we amend that to add an additional Board of Education member and an alternate? So that, I agree with Rose, so at least we have somebody there at the meetings.
This is, in effect, a committee.
It's a subcommittee.
Subcommittee of the council.
Correct.
So you can continue your jurisdiction, and if you want to amend the total number of people or where they're from, I would think that'd be okay.
So we make a motion to do that?
Yeah, I'm, you don't need an ordinance, in other words.
So I would like to make a motion that we have an additional Board of Education member, so that would make six members, plus an alternate on the Board of Education.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Arman. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Follin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
We're meeting next Tuesday, and hopefully we'll be able to start meeting with department heads. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item eight, Town Manager's Report. Item A, CMed Update.
Yes, I think we said at the last meeting, you had the, you had the, trimmed out of the options, and we went into a meeting, passed these around, and there was a change in there in terms of the number of options, and I'll thank Chief Seward, who's, I believe he's here somewhere, yeah, for attending the meetings, and also supplementary, supplemental meetings with fire chiefs in terms of their, and I think it's out of that dialogue that came the, a new option, which is listed, I'm passing it around now, a new option with CMed for what's called Option Under Heading Two, West Haven, potentially to look at that as whether or not it's a viable option to move the operation to West Haven P.S.A. So that was the new wrinkle in terms of what was offered in the, in the dialogue and the meeting process. So the meeting went rather long, and was included that they would evaluate both number two and number four, is the southwest door, is actually is Bridgeport. So those two are the ones that have been narrowed down within the group to look at further evaluation. We have another special meeting scheduled for Thursday morning to evaluate these two top options at this point. And on top of that, it will tell you that, again, thanks to Chief Seward behind the scenes, we are exploring other options, and we're going to sit down and talk with Shoreline. I'll be talking to them tomorrow, and it's going to be to meet with them to discuss a possible option if this, as a backup, if this does not work for. So there's a lot of moving pieces in there, one of which is, we not only have to deal with where this group, this scenario is really down to nine, possibly 10 towns staying together, looking at moving as a group to either West Haven or Bridgeport. And there are issues with, with both that have to be worked out, and the other issue is whether or not CMed, if we move, if CMed is going to dissolve, and then we have the pension liability that we have to deal with. But it wouldn't just be us and the nine towns, it would be everybody as this thing just implodes. And if CMed dissolves, we would have to address that issue. Attorney Ryan is there, working that side of the equation, to advise the members in the CMed organization as to how that's going to play out. So still a work in progress. Thursday's probably, you know, time to make decisions in terms of what looks realistic, and they're bringing back numbers to see how close they were to their initial draft numbers on this sheet here. So I'll know more on Thursday, and also report on how the meeting goes with Shoreline on Wednesday. I'm sure Chief Seward wants to add something to that, but I think it's been very instrumental, very helpful in dialoguing with the group.
Thanks, Mike. Actually, I just left West Haven, and they've been working on their budget numbers, they have another meeting set up tomorrow, and it looks like their numbers are going to come in very high. And again, it has to do with union issues within their, their current operation. As Mike said, there's a meeting established tomorrow with Valley Shore Communications. They are the focus for Branford, Madison, and Guilford at the present time, and to the best of our knowledge, their per capita cost for providing the service is 40 cents per capita, where all the others are at, at least $1 per capita and above. I had an interesting conversation today that I'll share with you, with our new emergency management director, who is a lieutenant in the Bridgeport Fire Department, and we had a discussion about Southwest CMed. And from my professional experience, I would tell the town manager to be very aggressive with the negotiations with Valley Shore. And another option that exists on the list that wasn't discussed may be a backup for us. However, I would suggest that we be very aggressive in communicating our needs to Valley Shore at this point.
But I thought that.
Yeah, I thought Valley Shore said they couldn't handle us.
Was out of the picture because they couldn't handle us, we were too far or something?
They, they have made some technology upgrades, they're doing so as we speak, so it's, it's a very good possibility that with their infrastructure updates, that they will be able to take care of us.
Okay, good.
Is there a certain amount of people or towns that they can take, in other words, if we don't get in there?
That's going to be part of, I'm sure that's going to be part of the discussion. And I think this council, I'm just going to bring it up later on, but I think this council really needs to take a hard and fast look at the future of where this all goes. At the present time, Valley Shore is a regional dispatch center, they're based out of Troop F in Westbrook. Because they're a regional dispatch center, they do get supplemental funds from the state of Connecticut. And if House Bill 6970 passes and it becomes effective January 1st, 2018, then communities with a population of less than 40,000 will be forced into regionalized dispatch, or without regionalizing dispatch, that community would have to pay for all the new generation 911 equipment, and would get no further supplemental funds from the state. That puts us in that position. So at least from the EMS side of communications, at this point, to move in that direction is something that we need to consider for the future of this town from an emergency communication standpoint.
Do they can handle the regional side?
It's up for discussion. I gave the town manager seventeen questions to ask at Valley Shore, and again, that would help us make a prudent decision on where we're going to go.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, chief.
I have one other quick note. In your folders, you'll see a sub draft language Anthony was able to get concerning the self-insurance reserve fund. Not that you need to take action tonight, it's in the folder for you to take home, take a look at it, and subsequent meetings, maybe the 19th or a meeting on June, begin to talk about the right language, maybe massage that around to, or tailor it to the town's overall branding. I'm not sure what source or what town, where that came from, but Anthony was able to grab as a starting point for, for us to look at.
I was able to contact the finance director group that I belong to, and what you have in front of you is a compilation of pieces of Glastonbury, Westbrook, Madison, Manchester, I believe, and about three other ones, that I took bits and pieces of to try to make one cohesive policy that addresses all the different concerns, the purpose of it, the funding mechanism, what to, what to do in case there's a shortfall, it kind of touches on all the pieces and all the different players involved. Just a starting point, so feel free to hack it up and come back with any suggestions you want to.
Westbrook is self-insured?
Yes. Yes. And again, when we ultimately decide on a policy, you'll bounce it by John's office for his blessing, and then enact it.
Thank you, Anthony.
So would this be an ordinance or just a policy?
I think it depends on where the council, how strong the council felt about that.
Pretty strong.
I mean, I just see the last line, it says this policy will be reviewed annually, and I think one of our concerns was that we wanted to have something in place that couldn't be changed by future councils.
Right, I noticed that, too.
We probably can't encumber future councils, though.
No, there's no, I mean, the future council could amend the ordinance.
Either way, okay.
Could repeal the ordinance.
Well, at least they have to take that vote.
But I'm not sure that it does require an ordinance, because this is, this is a policy involving our existing health insurance plan, and I, I would look into it, but I, I don't think you have to go through the formality of an ordinance where.
So it's just a policy setting the.
Where there's a public hearing, yeah, no, this is just an investment vehicle that's being suggested by the finance director, and you can just vote on it.
All right. Item B, Update Redevelopment of Fox and Road Sidewalk.
Yeah, that was just sidewalk, that idea, in terms of economic development.
All right. Item nine, Community Events and Presentations. Citizen Statements, Petitions, Correspondence, Resignation and Appointments. Appointment, it's a reappointment of Mr. Jack Crasco to the RWA Board of Directors.
I'll move the motion.
Second. Is there a term that goes, like, does it expire at a certain point? It's a three-year term, but I must keep it in.
That's what's happening now, is term expired.
Right, so do we have to put, like, expires, the term expires, like, or it doesn't matter?
It's the RWA that sets that one.
Oh, okay.
All right, moved by Councilor Rose, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Rose? Yes.
Item 12, Unfinished Business, Discussion and Action. Item A, I believe that's still tabled. Item B, Review of Leases for Town Properties.
Yeah, this was, what I got was various properties that we leased to farmers, but there were no terms.
Right. For dollar amount.
Limitations of what they can do and not do. Yeah, I, other than, I wasn't able to find that, and other than auger that we bid out for each season, there are no terms I could find for DeFrancesco or. Somebody must know what we collect. Anthony, do you know what we get paid?
Yeah, I guess I don't. I don't think that comes off my head, but.
When do they pay? It's like the end of the season or something?
It's a bit of a bone of contention. I would prefer that one went up front, quite honestly, and one of them pays at the end of the season. So after he does his business, then he pays us.
Okay.
We get paid, though.
So we have it buttoned up really well, is what you're saying.
I mean, do we have leases with them? Or is it?
There was a bid, as management mentioned, it was a formal bidding process, I don't remember when it was done last, you know, I can check on it for you.
Thing that jumped out at me is, like, one of them seemed to encompass wall field. Unless I misunderstood, that the way that the aerial photo was outlined, it had wall field in the middle of it. Some were listed to Joe DeFrancesco.
Could you give us the details for the next meeting and the dollar amount? And actually, I know a few years back, the, I think the Ag Commission was looking at, you know, they were looking at, you know, what do you want growing on town land, especially with, you know, all the herbicides and everything, and then they were in conversation with the water authority, because they have a pretty good handle on what you want to do on public lands. So it may be something that really needs to be revisited.
And in fairness, it ought to be standardized, it should be a deal.
Right, and not only that, it's like, you know, a lot of times, a lot of these places, you know, it's like you get it for, and, you know, there's always deals in renting farmland, it's like if the land's no good and you're going to improve it, you know, you normally will get, you know, a couple of years at a lower rate. But all that stuff has to be really, you know, spelled out, and then they always, you know, typically come up for, they come up for bid again. So, you know, otherwise, you know, just one guy that, you know, that got lucky once doesn't get the land every year. Maybe they get it for five years or something like that, but I think there, there should be a policy. And that, that would be fair to everybody, then, because, I mean, these guys now, especially if there's no policy and there's no deal, like, they don't know whether they have the land next year or not.
All right, reinstatement of Public Safety Communications Committee.
Well, yeah, I mean, I hope you, I think the information that the town manager supplied us right after the last council meeting, which probably, if you're like myself, don't have it with you tonight, went through the various iterations of that commission. And at, at one point, I don't know if it was the beginning or the middle or where, it was really, it was really a committee of the Fire Commission. And there was also some minutes in the early 80s where the then-town attorney said, "We better check the charter." And in my view, depending on how you want to go here, and the last time we discussed this, you wanted to have sort of a, you know, a variegated committee of people from the Fire Commission here, somewhere else, whatever. I think this is something, because there's no clear history, that should be simply created by ordinance. And I, I have no problem drafting it, just requires setting it down, having a public hearing, and it's done. But to rely on something, plus, it was defunct for, I don't know how many years, 20 years? You know, it was on, it was off, it was, I wish I had the stuff with me, but you, you also received it, and the constituency of that quote committee would change. So there's nothing in terms of a past practice or, or precedent that I would feel comfortable saying, "Well, this is, we already have this." I don't think we have it. If, and if we do have it, I don't know what we have. So my thing is for you to take the opportunity to create whatever committee, or if it's going to be a subcommittee of the council, or if it's going to be a commission, to, to create one for, for the particular purposes you have in mind at this time. And then we'll just put, just create an ordinance, and you'll have a, you'll have a commission or a committee.
We actually formed one, because I was on it, I think, two or three years ago, when we were looking at regional.
Mike Dewey was on it, too.
Mike Dewey was on it.
So I don't know how that one operated.
And there was members from the Fire Commission, the Fire Chief, Police Commission. There was a gentleman, Gary Stangl, that was at the time running CMed. So, you know, we could look at that, and that wasn't too long ago.
What's the point of keeping agonizing over this thing? Well, it's just like John doing ordinance, we have a public hearing and adopt the ordinance.
We've doubled it.
But what you might want to do on this, this evening or at a subsequent council meeting is say what you want it to be, and what you, the areas that you want to cover, and who's going to be on it, because obviously I can't draft an ordinance if I don't know.
Well, I think that the last meeting, I think the Fire Commission who spoke mentioned a variety of topics that needed to be addressed, so you can start with that.
Well, I mean, but I serve the council, and it's a council.
No, I understand that, but I mean, you're saying, what are some of the things that need to be addressed? I think, you know, some of those things were mentioned.
Well, if you're, if you're, if you're, I can talk to the town manager, and I can propose some things that we think may be relevant, but it really.
I think it gives us a sense of, not so much the town, but how you want it structured.
The makeup.
The makeup.
How many counselors, how many fire commissioners, how many police commissioners, how many public at large, I think that's what you're looking for.
Well, that, yes, but I'm still not clear as to what it's supposed to do, either.
People aren't going to be showing up for meetings.
Communicate.
I would think that's a workable number, and then the purpose and mission of the committee, I would just, I would leave that vague. Let them have the latitude to talk about whatever they want to talk about.
So, so this, basically, this is a combination of several important boards and commissions in the town.
Police, Fire, Town Council.
To have regular.
Public at large.
Okay, I'll go up with something.
Public safety and emergency, something like that.
Yeah, the Board of City Manager Director. The EMB.
Yeah. I would think that.
I'll make it vague.
I would think that the Director of Public Works should be on it, too. Because unless it's snow and he doesn't get out much.
All right, so John will take care of that. Item D is Formation of Selection Committee for redevelopment of 599 Fox and Road on Branford.
Commission on Public Safety. Yeah, so this is what I referenced, if you want to, you know, defer this to the, to the 19th, that's fine, there's still time in terms of the formation, the selection, and quite frankly, you know, as a subdivision of the, of the group, like we were just talking about, three to five members, and/or if you think, it's hard to say how many proposals we'll get, but ultimately, if we only get, you know, two, be the whole council.
Correct.
So, but I think, you know, we'll probably get, you know, a few, and one, something to kind of sift through that, and if there's nothing else, they'll just, they'll just send all of them up to the, to the full council.
Well, I think Council Rose should definitely be on this committee.
Yeah, but, you know, you got, you want to be done by June 30th, and I got to tell you, between, you know, construction season and farm season, I really shouldn't be here tonight. I really can't, I just have no time from now till, if you want to start next December and go through the winter.
But you have the knowledge base.
Yeah, but it's going to come back before us, anyway. What I'd like to do is have Michael send out the developers to us, send it out in an email of who picked up stuff, you know, because that's something that, you know, you can look at and research, figure out who picked them up.
Yeah.
I mean, because I think they, they agreed that they were going to bring, like, the top two or three back to the council, anyway, but I really have no time. two or three back to the council anyway, but I really have no time.
Okay. Item E, review of proposal for 12 Bittersweet Drive, North Branford.
Right, this is what we've been, been working on with the Sterros and their attorney Marcus. They're here tonight, and we've, we've had a lot of communication, talking about trying to resolve the situation in a manner, and put in a memo that comes down to, basically they're agreeing to cost share with us on the 750 for the lot line revision map, and try and take care of that encroachment. So Kurt had, had some conversations with the land trust. I don't know that we've heard back from them at this point. And there's some, you know, we still have to agree to which, you know, in that line map revision, where we'll carve out the swap. So Kurt, I don't know, nothing yet from the land trust?
Nothing more formal than, I think, I, I mentioned last time, that the land trust was okay with sort of the, the carve out in, in the back of the property where there was encroachment, there's a house and there's some, a yard and the fence. I think that goes 40 feet by about 200 feet. And they'd like to, if they end up with it, switch it, sort of a hybrid. I, I showed a couple alternatives at the rear of the property, taking rectangular pieces out of it, and they were going to get back on, in terms of what they thought that would work, something that's more of a square type of layout in the back. But again, I haven't, they haven't met, as a group, again, I've talked to the land trust president, he gave me their initial feed, a couple of the members, what they thought would work or wouldn't work. So that's where we are. We're waiting for their final feedback, but I imagine it's going to be something pretty close to that.
So Kurt, could you explain to me, why, why would, why would we be offering the swap anything more than what makes the lot legal?
Again, it's just a matter.
If it's a 15 yard, 15 foot setback, why would you?
Yeah, if we go for just strictly zoning, I mean, they're using it right now. I mean, there's a fence over there, there's more, I mean, there's.
Right, but isn't that a dangerous precedent, or people are going to start using town-owned land and then say, we can take it? Or the town will give it to them?
I mean, what I tried to do, and again, it was for initial discussion purposes, was to try to carve off what's, what's been occupied for something that elsewhere on the property, to try to match it, so we end up with the same, we don't lose any property, we just sort of rearrange what would be our property. And again, throwing in the other factor that is the intent still to convey it to the land trust ultimately, and try to get some of their feedback, what works for them. If we're going to keep it.
And the other thing I saw, it looked like they were talking about the, a place for the trailer or the motor home. If you're going to give them a piece of land 40 feet, 40 feet by 200 feet, you could put an eight foot six wide motor home on that piece of property without encroaching further.
Sounds like the motor home's going.
Yeah, Attorney Marcus just said that, that's sort of out of the picture.
Yeah, but this memo didn't say that.
Yeah, well.
And that's what I go, I don't care who yells something out from the audience.
Okay, did I?
So I think, you know, when we were.
So in other words, this means nothing tonight. And you're going to go forward with that?
Well, depending on the direction of council, then we'll go forward with whatever direction.
If you don't like this, I mean, I mean, otherwise this would seem, is a proposal
Kurt, just remind me, who, who owns the joint land? Is it the town or the land trust?
It's the town that owns it. The number 12 Bittersweet is town owned. This came off.
So the easy solution is to get this done, is have the town take it, and if we choose to convey it to the land trust, three months from now, we can do that.
Yeah, and one of the thoughts was, if the intent is to convey it to the land trust, might as well get their feedback. I mean, to do it, to do it right, and then so everybody, hopefully, be happy at the end. And I believe I'll, we'll be getting input very shortly, just maybe weren't able to get back to this meeting, other than the inform. But certainly, I, my, my thing would be, if that's the intent, let's get it so everybody, hopefully, or at least is pretty happy.
And East Shore Health was good with this?
I, I've got to finalize, they're, they're good with, um, in the back, I think they're, they're good with it because the.
Because that would be the important, that's really the only one that matters.
Absolutely, and with the sort of hybrid proposal the land trust wants, I believe that's going to be okay, because the system is up close to the house, and we're dealing with a piece of property that we would swap that is significantly removed from there. And apparently, there were some test, test bits done around the house, there were some soil testing done, um, five or six years ago, I believe, and they had some good information. Alex and Hadi officially said, yeah, as long as you do it, turn back, he didn't see any issue with it. I have to finalize that, certainly, if that's where we go, because I have to revise my, my alternative. But the initial indication is, he doesn't see an issue.
So then, the only other issue is where the council is with the, with the fees. We've already paid 1,500.
That's correct.
And then it's 750 more.
Well, why don't we hear what the landowners representative has to say?
I'd like to be heard, but I've had shots of cortisones, cortisone in my knees.
Okay.
Would anyone object if I did this?
No, could you just state your name for the record, sir? Thank you.
My name is Edward Marcus, Marcus Law Firm, and we're representing the service.
Could I just state on the record before Mr. Marcus speaks, that many, a number of years ago, I worked in his office, more years than he or I care to.
You were both younger then.
It's been a long time.
It's been a while. So I don't think I have a conflict, but I just want that on the record. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think part of the difficulty in this matter, as far as the council is concerned, is there's been a lack of information transmitted to the council. This lot is one of 52 lots, as part of a subdivision that was approved in 1967. Actually, the land owned by the town was given to the town as part of the deal relative to the approval of the subdivision. So it was land gifted to the town at that time. The first conveyance of Lot 51 took place in 1967. The next conveyance took place in 72. Actually, my law firm handled that conveyance. The next one was in 1976, and that was for about 80,000. It started at 5,800, but inflation did take over. The conveyance in 1983 was for over 200,000. So at that point in time, there clearly was a house on the property. Assuming that it was just built on or about 1980, you're talking about 35 years of this encroachment existing. The Serres acquired the property several years ago. Every one of the five conveyances had exactly the same description. We handled the acquisition by the Serres. We did obtain title insurance. It was with a survey exception. I think Attorney Troy will tell you that the current practice is that when a buyer acquires a title to property that is part of a subdivision, and there have been multiple conveyances prior to that acquisition, you simply don't obtain a survey. Yet in 99.9% of the cases, would not be necessary. This is an absolute aberration. Now, that being said, and I want to make it clear that the Serres have done nothing that is improper. They took title to property that they believed was within the lines of the description. It had been used by other people for many years. The town issued a C O. The town has collected taxes on this property. But all that being said, we're willing to work out a, let's call it a deal with the town, to get this behind us. Mr. Serra did request the use of land for a trailer, but that request is withdrawn. It appears to complicate the matter. We are certainly prepared to go along with a swap, basically in accordance with the option that was set forth by Navis and Young, or the town engineer, I'm not certain who prepared the map that's been submitted to the council.
Yeah, that's something I, I prepared a markup, in terms of the alternatives.
I mean, it's marked Lot 16, actually, it's Lot 51 on the subdivision map. But we accept their survey as being accurate, although we have no way of knowing that it is. Obviously, the lines that were drawn by Genovese back in 1967 are the lines that we were guided by in the acquisition. We also have spoken with your town manager. He had indicated that the costs were about $750, and we indicated that we would pay half of the cost. I think that this is a matter that has just grown from a molehill into a mountain. It really is not that big a deal. What happened, happened. No one intended to encroach. No one was aware of the fact that there was an encroachment. We're willing to swap land with the town, taking from the town roughly, I guess, 8,000 square feet, and giving that square footage back to the town on the other side of the property. And as I say, it's really not a big deal. I think it's become one, really, because no one has really explained, up until this evening, what the background is. And incidentally, I would have been here at the other meeting, previous meeting, relating to this matter, but never had noticed that we were on the agenda. We were not notified, Serres were not notified, and that's why we were not present. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I, I think this is something that is easy to understand and easy to fix.
I don't think there's really any opposition to giving you what you need, other than getting the land trust to say, yeah, they want this configuration or that one. So I think, I think at the end of the day, that can happen. If there is anything that gives us cause, it's probably, why would the town pick up any of the expenses of correcting what was a surveyor's error back from 40 years ago on a piece of private property?
Well, we don't know that it was a surveyor's error.
Seems to be.
The property was built, evidently, if the survey that we now have from Avs and Young is correct, there's an encroachment. That encroachment has existed for many, many, many years. It's just unfortunate that Mr. Serra is the, the guy that ends up holding the bag.
Which is why we want to cooperate. We don't want that citizen.
This is the fifth, it's the fifth conveyance using the same description. But we want to get it cleared up, and we're willing to do so. Obviously, Mr. Serra wants to, the Serres want to have their voice as to what it is that's being swapped. What was shown to us by the engineer was acceptable. I don't know what the current issue is, and what the holdup is. We met with Mr. Paulus twice, and the second meeting, I believe, was several weeks ago. And we believe that it had been resolved, other than approval by the council.
So I have a question for you. So, so certainly, you know, we understand that you guys want to make a deal, because unfortunately for your client, they have a property now they can't sell unless the town makes a deal with them. So, you know, now that it's known.
Except we could bring up a quiet title action.
Here's the thing, if, so, you know, I'm looking at this as to, you know, who made this mistake? So it's obvious that Naftis and Young went off the subdivision map to create that boundary. They didn't make up a boundary. So they went off the record subdivision map to make, to show us where the boundary is. So I've been asking right along, was the house built in the wrong place, or was there an addition put on the house, not by your clients? But we'd be a fool to sit here and start doing land swaps without saying, who made the mistake, if we can figure it out? Now, we've asked, and, I mean, so from my point of view, I think that the house was built in the right place, and if I went there, I could tell you if there was an addition on it or not. I, I'm thinking there was an addition. There's no record of the addition in town hall, is that correct, Kurt?
No, I looked, I couldn't find.
Okay, so that tells me that somebody built an addition on the town land without a permit. But we don't know all that. But, you know, thank you for the zoning lesson that you gave us, but I'm pretty sure we all understand how, where we have to accept land from zoning, that, you know, the, the land is gifted from a developer and all that. But, you know, it isn't like, you know, somebody blatantly built the house in the wrong place, okay? There wasn't a surveyor's mistake, or when Naftis and Young surveyed it based on the record subdivision map, the boundary would have been 40 feet away from your house, or wherever this property thinks it was. You know, so it is kind of odd that a house could be sold that many times without anybody picking up, especially the attorneys closing on the house, that you just don't have, you know, you, you got a house, you were selling, you were telling you, go ahead and buy this house, and it's on the town's land. But, you know, I have no problem with this if East Shore Health has it, and obviously, we're not going to get to the problem. You know, we're not going to figure out how it happened, because it probably was underhanded by some previous homeowner. Because, you know, even back, you know, really after about 1962, nobody was building a house on the, on the, you know, on the wrong piece. Now, I haven't heard on this map that the boundaries were wrong. Were the boundaries wrong on this subdivision?
No, I, I didn't.
Okay, well, guess what? Go up to Briarwood, where I did a development after one that was done wrong, and the boundaries on every lot was 30 feet off. And just luckily, the houses all fit when it was corrected. But this one isn't that one. So this one, the house was built, somebody built the house in the wrong place.
But, but also, I, I will add, there's another encroachment on this property from their neighbor. So something.
So something's wrong there, too.
Something happened wrong, you know, in a couple of those houses, because they also had.
And granted, nobody who lives there made these mistakes, but again, it's like, how do you, you know?
They, they also.
And today, today, hopefully, it wouldn't happen.
Yeah, they also have, they have an issue with their other neighbor that they're going to have to deal with on their own.
There's an encroachment by the contiguous line on the Serres line. A driveway and a shed.
Yeah.
It's, and we're, we have to deal with that at some point.
I'm sure they'll never buy another property without a A2 survey done.
Well.
So that's the other thing, Kurt, if you took their deed description, which must be what they surveyed, if you took the deed description from day one and laid it over the, did an overlay on it, it's where the boundary is, that Naftis and Young did?
Yeah, pretty much, again, the, the interesting thing, the G I S mapping with the aerial photo, which is.
Well, that's how we saw it. We saw it here. There was an argument, the people came to town complaining about a cell tower. We had the overlay here, and some of us said, whoa, there's a house that's on the town line. And that's how this all started. So actually, you know, luckily for these people, they're going to have it resolved, or they might have needed to sell the house someday and not been able to.
And to be honest with you, unless that showed up like that, a lot of times, you wouldn't know, you know, unless there was a survey done. I mean, that, that sort of set it out, and the question at that point, if you remember, was, geez, is it G I S mapping law, or is it survey law?
That's why we have a survey done.
That's the way it turns out.
I mean, actually, what happened is, we have handled two of the transactions, the chain of title. Back in 72, it was a lot. It was a real big deal. It sold for $7,000. And my office did handle that, and we used the description that was set forth on the subdivision, and the description that had been set forth in the previous conveyance. And a number of offices handled conveyances on this, the old Kilpatrick office, which John, I'm sure, will remember, in Branford handled one of them, Patrick Josephson and
Dick Gahl. Dick Call.
And that was a good office.
Absolutely.
And the house got built somewhere between seventy-six and eighty-three, because you could see the prices go up in the conveyances. And when we handled it for the Sarahs, we got title insurance, we did not order a survey because there'd be no reason to. Same description in every conveyance. But at some point, someone from the town went out, looked at the house that went up, which I would guess was somewhere between seventy-six and eighty-three, and issued a CO. So it's kind of, not really anyone's fault, it's one of those things that happened, and let's try to correct it.
And that's what we're doing.
And we are perfectly willing to cooperate. But we do want to have a final say as to what it is we're swapping.
Well, unfortunately for you, we have the final say.
Well, I understand that, but we want to be able to weigh in on it.
But listen to your final say.
What we've seen so far is fine. We really don't know what the interest of the land trust is in what's being conveyed by us to either the land trust or the town. So I'm uncertain as to what their interest is, or whether or not they have control over what it is that we are going to be swapping. Or is it the?
Parents are considering taking title to the strip of land. So if they do, they want some voice on what strip of land they're going to take. I mean, we can approve it, subject to the land trust going along with it, and they can do that with a discussion with Kurt, and with Attorney Marcus, and the East Shore Health District sign off on it, and it's done.
The only other question, Kurt, is was, are we giving up access to the land behind it? Was that what that piece of land was left for during the subdivision?
No, there's no access from that, from the COLIS Act to it. If we make the modification, as I sketched out, it wouldn't change anything in terms of access. The only thing it would do is, two of the alternatives, one was just to give a little sliver at the tail end to the land trust, and they didn't like, and the other one was to give a piece like this, this sort of unusable land for them, that little slip at the end. And the other one made it a little more difficult for Sarahs, they were talking about just squaring it off the nail. So configuration-wise, to be honest with you, it makes sense, it's the in-between alternative. And again, I gave it just sort of as, as talking points, and I think that would work from East Shore Health District. But it, but it doesn't change the access or anything like that in terms of, you know, how you get the other piece from there.
Do we need a motion, or?
All right, I'll move to approve the land swap, subject to the input of the land trust in the East Shore Health District. However, the cost associated with the swap should be borne by the property owner.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Foreman, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Pendero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arden.
Yes.
Councilor Foden.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
That motion is on full cost for the Sarahs.
Whatever the costs are.
They, they met us in terms of halfway, I think.
Well, I think it really is a minor point, since we're talking about several hundred dollars to correct a fairly serious problem of our own. And we don't see the justification for the town picking up a portion of the cost.
We already paid the fifteen hundred.
Yeah, we issued a certificate of occupancy, means nothing more than the property is habitable. It doesn't mean that we're certifying as to the dimensions of the lot or anything having to do with, with the size of the lot, so. And we paid for the preliminary survey that was done by Navis and Young.
I think there ought to be some cap on the cost. We had discussed them, and Mike had indicated that the cost would be about seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I have no idea. What are you, what are you basing on, Mike?
I got, just Kurt gave me that.
We got the vote initially to do the boundary survey on the initial map, Navis and Young did fifteen hundred dollars, and he gave us, we asked for a price for the second phase, assuming that we might go back, that was seven hundred and fifty, to do a correcting that.
That's the last step.
So that's, we got a firm number at that point.
We're at two-thirds of the bill right now, we're asking you to pay a third.
Yeah, why don't you? Yeah, why don't you think you should bear that cost?
No, he wanted a cap.
A cap, right.
But we're just.
He gave you a cap.
They're an independent contractor, I mean, you can negotiate with them, get a cap from them, but we can't tell them what to charge.
Well, that was the, the number that Mike provided us with. And we had talked about the Sarahs paying half of it, they simply don't really have the money at this point.
Well, essentially, what the council voted was to make you an offer.
Right.
And it's out there for, for your clients to accept. And the offer is subject to two external entities, I suppose, East Shore Health and the Land Conservation Commission.
You know, work out a deal with Navis and Young and pay it overtime. I don't, I don't really know how to respond, but I think we've done everything we can do. There's really nothing else that, that I think we can offer. There's a problem with the site, and we'd like to see it corrected, and we don't want to hurt a citizen of this town. But beyond that, I don't think we can justify the town picking up the cost of correcting what's in the error on a piece of private land.
Okay, I understand, but the council has voted, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, I just want to, you know, let you guys know, you know, I didn't have the support up here, but I would have given you the fifteen feet needed for a side yard, okay? So you've got a gift. You've got your problem solved, and you've got a gift.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, discussion in action. Item A, review bond process and municipal projects.
Yeah, this is going to have discussion, I think, I put this on here because I want the council to look at the issues involved and the process involved for the motion that you made for the five million dollar bond issue. Internally, we're looking at that, that process, and look, you know, department heads looking at the numbers. The issue with Walt, not Walt, I'm sorry, Memorial Field and the field issue, and the amount of allocation is, in all likelihood, is not going to finish the job. I think the numbers were very soft, and I think that it needs more time, and I suggest we bring back to the nineteenth on a meeting of discussion of hard numbers, or hard numbers, I guess, on, on those direction in terms of what you want to accomplish with the bond fund. And that will give us time also to talk about, you know, the resolution and the bond process, whether or not talking with our advisor, if we're going to go on anticipation notice for actual, into the bond market if the rates are favorable for us. So I think we need to, to bring to your attention that I want you to go down the road thinking that five million, and you were supposed to do X, Y, and Z and get it done. I, I don't have confidence in those, those numbers that we threw out, that it's going to get what you want accomplished. And I think we're going to need more time for the May and for Anthony and I to talk to advisor and talk to, you know, about preparing bond resolutions and doing that, and the council be, you know, participating in the understanding that we're going to have a timeline and how we're going to proceed. The other, the other, the other factor that just came in today is, and I'll give this to you under, or I can hand it out now, for item twelve H, which is the TBS roof replacement, those numbers are over what our, you know, base estimate was at one point seven two. So we've got some, some issues to, to talk about there. I mean, we have some options Anthony and I met today, and we can present that for you when we get to that. But I think maybe we'll further this conversation until you, until you get to TBS roof, and then it'll come back for the next meeting to say, okay, how, how do you want to package this? How do you want to do it? Because it's got some impact in terms of what decisions you want to make, in terms of how much you want to bond, how you want to do it. Because the numbers are high and they're over what, what we based it to, or what we had anticipated, so.
Is talking about that roof on our agenda tonight?
We amended the agenda to.
Right, okay. So since we're on bonding, I, on how we bond, is that what?
Yeah, bond process.
Right, the bond process. So, and we don't have to, we don't have to, I'm going to throw this out here now because it's on the agenda and I don't have to prolong the agenda. I think that when you look at our town and you look at our, we live, you know, we're in a very liberal state, and we're, there's only like ten towns in the state that have a higher debt per capita than we do. So obviously, we don't, we, we borrowed more money than we can really afford. So I think in our bonding, especially with, you know, there's always rumblings of people who, you know, they think, you know, we need a new high school. Well, the local high schools are going for about eighty million. We need this, we need that. I think that this town council needs to have a, have a discussion about, you know, putting a cap on what we can just bond as a council. And if you're going to bond, and I don't know what the number is, if we're going to bond fifteen million, or twenty million, or fifty million, it ought to go to a townwide vote. With the actual cost to the taxpayers, I mean, a lot of the towns do have a vote on whether they're going to build a high school, or a new town hall, or any of that. So with people out there saying we need a new town hall, and people out there saying we need a new high school, what we definitely need is an ordinance to let the townspeople vote on how, how much further into debt that they're willing to go. Rather than just having five people on the town council put the town eighty to a hundred million in debt. So I'd like to have that on another agenda, that, so that we can talk about it and see if we can't, you know, put a cap on what the council can bond without a town referendum vote.
And would that formulation be based on, as you're saying, per capita perhaps?
I, I don't know, but I'm embarrassed to have been such a part of this council for so many years and then see the statistics that were, you know, one of the highest in debt per capita towns in the state. So I, I just feel that we need to, we need to look at it, because obviously, five votes are borrowing too much money. Another night.
So we can put this on the next agenda and talk about this?
Yeah, we can roll it right into the, you know, bring it back for the next meeting.
Great.
Capacity of it.
I agree with Al, I think we really need to be careful right now with this management of the public funds.
All right. Item B, request to change membership of Hasway's committee from twelve members to nine members.
Yeah, this is a request that came from the committee. I spoke with John, this is, again, probably, you know, obviously, we've got to change it by, we have ordinance to set a public hearing for, I think, the next meeting, come the nineteenth, set it for.
Is this because of quorum problems?
I believe, that's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Good idea.
So you can vote on that tonight or just put it on the agendas for a public hearing?
I think we'll prep it and put it on for, for the nineteenth, set a public hearing at the next meeting.
Item C, approved of the ASCME clerical contract.
Yeah, that's, I apologize, I misspelled ASCME there, the acronym is F-A-F-S-C-M-E. Clerical is the one that was ratified. A library we're waiting and hopefully have that for the next meeting.
I'm making a motion to approve the clerical contract, ASCME clerical contract.
However, the initials are.
Whatever the initials are.
I agree with that, but could we have Anthony or Michael just give the townspeople before we vote on it, just get, hit the four or five highlights of what it does, the pay raises, the insurance copay going up and all that? Whoever wants to take that?
Sure, just the.
Anthony can do it off the top of his head.
I, excuse the buzz. Do I have to do the numbers and not fill in the rest?
The clerical contract we're talking about tonight starts the fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen fiscal years. It encompasses a two-point-five percent wage increase for each of those three years. In the first year, there's no change to the medical copay, which is currently five percent. It goes to eight percent as of July first, twenty fifteen, and remains there for the last two years of the contract. There's an enhancement to the defined contribution plan. Currently, it's eight percent paid by the town, two percent by the employee. July one fifteen, it goes to eight and a half percent by the town, two and a quarter to the employee. Seven one sixteen, it goes to nine percent by the town and two and a half percent to the employee. There's a change in defined benefit plan only as it relates to years twenty-six through thirty of an employee's career with the town. The overall cost to the town based on the base share is seven-point-seven percent over the three years when accumulated together. One of the major changes that we accomplished was the elimination of the Blue Care Medical Insurance, which is about maybe six thousand dollars higher on the family plan compared to the century preferred. So that was a significant change. Everybody will be in a century preferred plan as of July first, twenty fifteen. Again, the key point is that the overall cost, seven-point-seven over a three-year package.
Thank you.
There were just a few other housekeeping items in terms of hours of operation that were covered, also the extension of the probationary period, tack on for anything that's of extensive thirty days. And one last item that we had with, within the grievance procedures to adding in a step three, which was mediation for our, just some of the language, housekeeping changes. But Anthony pretty much covered the tip, the numbers. I want to thank Marie for, for assistance and help in, in long hours of negotiation and mediation. Thank you very much.
Okay. So it was moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Foreman. Roll call.
Mayor Pendero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arden.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Foden.
Yes.
Item D, I believe we have the table.
Move by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni.
Roll call.
Mayor Pendero.
So vote by table?
Table, yes. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arden.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Foden.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Item E, approval on the purchase of a screening plant for Public Works.
Brandy's up, right?
He's got a unique opportunity.
Yeah. Unique opportunity.
I got a, I got a day off of work at the main.
Nice.
So I went to the main to see the, the screening plant, and it's in very good shape. It was one guy, one operation, tops oil, land, sand. The only difference is that the, the price that we settled on wasn't the price I got on the paper here, just a little bit more than that, but.
Was it lower?
Well, it, it ended up being twenty-seven five, but I also got four screens put in. One of them is brand new, you know, two are only a year old. It's got brand new pellets on it, a green belt and a conveyor belt, and the generator runs, it's two years old. So it's, and it's in very good shape. So the screens are all around about five, three bucks a piece. So I only got those with the screener. If I went down with twenty-five.
So what would that machine cost, brand new?
About a hundred and, a hundred and three or a hundred and nine thousand. And last year, just the one road alone, we really didn't do much topsoil work, but we did, we paid one road last year, and we spent over ten thousand dollars in topsoil. So we're buying stuff that we don't, that we.
And you have piles of topsoil that just needs to be screened. And you have piles of topsoil that just needs to be screened?
We use it with topsoil, we do use it to screen buildings, so we can reuse the buildings, like we're gonna be building roads in July.
So, so what's the problem, this is where Anthony comes in again, what's the problem with, so we don't have the money to buy it right now?
Well, we got, I have twelve thousand in rental. And then, you wanna take over costs?
But is the twelve thousand, you were only renting for one month? Or is that the total that was?
Right.
Okay.
And the problem, as, as Fran explains it, is you can get a, you know, several days of rain in that period, and you're paying the rental fee still, but you can't use it. Whereas if you have it at your disposal all the time, you can alter your schedule. If you get a week of rain, and it's the period you're renting it for, you've lost that money, basically.
Right.
And again, the amount of bills we paid last year on topsoil, as he backfilled the curbs up on Gale Drive he's talking about, it was just, it's mind-boggling, the amount of money we paid for dirt, that we have piles of dirt that we could go through the screening process and, and use.
The other advantage is that, but we, we don't have a lot of guys, so when we have a downtime or something, go screen topsoil or whatever we're doing, we should there, you know? And believe me, we have a lot of material to screen.
Where do you keep it?
There's, we have one property tied up, it's called Sycamore Property off of Route Seventeen. And then we have a bunch right where we are.
No, where would you keep the?
Screening plant.
Where would you?
Anywhere on the ground.
So you'd just leave it outside and also?
Yeah. Yep. Cover it up. You guys are real fussy.
So what do we, what, what do we have to do to?
Well, A, authorize, authorize the expenditure. It deviates from the purchasing guidelines as far as the requirement of budget. Basically, the motion, I believe, that was crafted allows you to authorize the purchase. And then the second piece is the funding mechanism. And the goal would be to transfer the twelve thousand that he has already in his general fund budget to his cap reserve to cover that. And then where does the shortfall come from? The proposal would be to have it come out of the NBIS funds. And then, so he made, made whole on the twenty-seven five. Have to change the motion from twenty-five to twenty-seven five, and then the shortfall would be.
So it's against our purchasing because it's more than, more than you can buy without going to bid?
It's not so much against us, it doesn't fit, because we don't, I mean, it's a used.
Used equipment, you can't really expect out used equipment.
You can't, you can't bid used equipment.
Right.
Because every piece is different.
Exactly.
And we did this before, when it was a tractor, I, I forgot the, I left it on my desk.
Yeah, true.
Now, we, we have it as.
Do you have it?
Yeah. No, it was part of our package.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Ramford Town Council authorizes the expenditure of no, no more than twenty-seven thousand five hundred for the purchase of a used screening plant to be used by the Public Works Department. Funding for this purchase will come from the Public Works Capital Reserve. After July first, two thousand fifteen, twelve thousand dollars will be transferred from the general fund in the capital reserve. And fifteen thousand five hundred will be transferred from the two thousand fifteen, sixteen capital improvement plan into the capital reserve. The source of the fifteen thousand five hundred will be surplus NBIS fund.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call?
Mayor Pendero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth.
Yes.
Council Angeloni.
Yes.
Council Irvin.
Yes.
Council Diamond.
Yes.
Council Fawnen.
Yes.
Council Rose.
Yes.
Item F. Purchase of loner ambulance.
Mayor, I believe you should have some supplemental information in front of you. Just kinda give you some quick background information here. While we had our two ambulances remounted, they were out of service for some time. And this past remount that we just received back, we acquired a loner ambulance on a daily lease basis. That provided us with a second ambulance during the time that our remount was being refurbished down in North Carolina. The ambulance worked out very well for us. The personnel liked it. It is mechanically sound. It's actually a repurposed vehicle. The box on the back came from Norwalk Hospital. It is mounted on a two thousand eight Ford Lifeline ambulance chassis. We acquired it from Eastford Fire and Rescue out of Eastford, Connecticut. They have been more than accommodating with us during this whole process. And in contacting with them, saying that we had talked to the Board of Fire Commissioners on a number of occasions about acquiring a third ambulance. And on the twenty-third of this month, a special meeting was held by the Board of Fire Commissioners, and they approved the final purchase price of four thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars for the ambulance. The current owner was asking approximately thirty thousand dollars for the vehicle. It is in very good mechanically sound condition. The, the bottom line here is that if we look at the feasibility of operating a third vehicle in, in our town, it's not as easy as it sounds. It's actually very complicated. You just can't buy an ambulance, go to motor vehicles, and put a plate on it and operate it. It's against state regulations. So there's a number of loops that we have to jump through in order to not only purchase the vehicle, but put it on the road. So we have initiated that process. We have met with the State Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services. Letters were mailed certified yesterday to all the surrounding fire departments down as far as New Haven. It goes to their chiefs, or it goes to the private ambulance company that services us, AMR in Connecticut, and provides them with notice of our intent to apply for a permit to operate a third vehicle through the Office of Emergency Medical Services. Letter stating our intention and the reasons why we would like to put a third ambulance on the road goes to State Health Department. They have to have a public hearing in which all the interested parties can attend and say pro or con against our request for a third permit. So that process has been initiated as of yesterday. We don't see any negatives to this acquisition. It actually is a, a very sound purchase. It will allow us to put a third vehicle on the road, especially when one of ours is in for routine maintenance or is out of service because of a maintenance issue, or otherwise grounded. Just for some background, in two thousand fourteen, in calendar year two thousand and fourteen, the fire department responded to one thousand four hundred and sixty-two EMS calls. That accounts for eighty point five five percent of our total responses. And out of that, there were one thousand thirty-eight transports, which represents thirty-one, seventy-one percent of our patient contacts being transported to area hospitals. And of that, our backup ambulance, Ambulance Forty-four, answered eighty-three additional calls. However, on top of that, we were unable to answer seventy other calls for service that were passed to another entity. So, having the capability of putting that third vehicle on the road fulfills a need in our municipality to take up those responses that we pass along to another service. But at the same time, it allows us the capability of staffing that vehicle and providing standby services for athletic events. So if you look at athletic events that occur at the football field or at the ice rink, they're required to have an ambulance standing by there. And State Health Department rules are such that the first opportunity to provide a standby ambulance has to go to the holder of the Certificate of Operation in that community, that's us. But if we can't take a vehicle out of service and put it there with personnel, then someone else can come in and fill that void. This gives us that capability of supplying personnel and a vehicle and getting paid for that during certain sports events. So that gives us an opportunity to bring in additional revenue. So, so with that said, we have a price estimate from Eastford Fire and Rescue to provide some needed repairs based upon Health Department regulations to put that ambulance in a state of worthiness that would pass a State Health Department inspection upon putting that in service. So you should have some information in front of you to substantiate that. And the funding source would be the ambulance capital reserve.
So would the repairs and everything that needs to be done, would that be able to get done prior to July first? So we would have it in service before July first?
Yes. And I failed to mention that the caveat here, it's really, really important that we get it in service June thirtieth. Because July first, there is a very strong potential for regulations being changed. It would require us to have a twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar piece of equipment in the back of that ambulance that federal government would then require to prevent people from physically lifting the stretcher up and putting the stretcher in the back. It would be a mechanical device that the federal government is requiring after July first. So there's a strong.
Do our other two ambulances have that?
Any ambulance purchased after July first has to have that.
Of two thousand fifteen.
Of two thousand fifteen, correct. Correct.
That's seven thousand dollars for the repairs and all that, is a pretty firm.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a strong estimate.
So, how, how, how do we get the staff to have, so what are there, two people and an ambulance? So then we'd have six people? If you had all three on the road?
Yeah, it would draw from our existing staff. Correct. The way our schedule's set up is through the, the Vintec contract, they provide paramedics twenty-four seven. Of the scheduled work hours, eighty percent is, is filled by Vintec, and twenty percent is reserved for North Ramford Fire Department personnel. We actually have been filling more than the twenty percent. So thus, it cuts down on the monies that we pay Vintec. And you gotta understand, the Vintec contract is pretty unique, and most fire chiefs can't believe that this is what we have for a contract. We contract out for, for our paramedics. In the contract, it basically says to this contractor, you have to hire our personnel first before you go outside. It also provides them with the ability, if the Vintec person on the ambulance is an EMT or a paramedic and one of our volunteer firefighters, they have their structural firefighting gear with them, and the ambulances are dispatched to structure fires. So if the ambulance is dispatched to a working structure fire, the on-duty ambulance member is allowed to deploy as a firefighter and is covered under the workers' comp of Vintec. Which is pretty unique.
What year are the chassis of our two, two best?
Two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen.
And what year were the chassis we replaced?
This, this would be, this ambulance that we're looking to use as.
No, not this one, the ones, didn't we just refit them?
Two thousand fifteen, right. They were both two thousand six now.
They were two thousand six?
So in thirteen, we did one, and fifteen, we did the second.
Okay, so see, that, that creates a problem for me to get a two thousand and eight chassis.
Two more years or are we gonna have to, you know, refit it?
Uh, it's, in, in my mind, it's a very sound vehicle right now. I would tend to believe we would get more than two years out of that chassis. And again, it's the third unit in line.
Is it in service now? Are you using it now?
We cannot use it now, we don't have a permit to operate three units.
Because you got the other one, you were just using it when the other one was being.
But so this, how long's this vehicle been out of service? You know?
Well, we were using it April sixth.
Oh, we were, right?
If I read that right.
Yeah.
So one of ours was getting fixed, so we were.
One of ours was getting remounted on the two thousand fifteen chassis down in North Carolina.
So when we got it back, then this one went out of service?
Correct.
So this one's not gonna run every day?
Absolutely. Correct.
But it would give you the, for sporting events, I mean, you could use.
Sporting events, and, and most importantly, when one of the vehicles are down because of mechanical reason or PM work, we still have two vehicles to use. Correct.
So on, on these calls, like, so, so, so we missed a call, because, so somebody else had to get it.
Correct.
That doesn't cost the town anything, that costs the people, right, something. But when it's in our own ambulance and somebody doesn't pay, you know, it does cost us money.
I, out of pocket, it doesn't cost us anything. It's just that we're minus that and.
But we're paying the personnel or whatever that we're on it.
Correct.
See, and I'm, you know, I'm just still, I'm still a little gun shy of anything to do, you know, with the ambulances because, you know, we sat here and it was gonna be a moneymaker and it turned into a money pit. Now, they do a great job. But, you know, we went from being told we were gonna make a million dollars a year to costing us a half a million dollars a year, or whatever it is. And that, that was a big swing.
I, I, I think I placed a, a point of emphasis on the fact that in that process, US government changed the rules during the game that highlighted what we can charge and what they will pay. That's far beyond our control locally.
So chief, I mean, you know, here we are talking about seven thousand dollars for an ambulance, because we already paid the rent. So, so just a, a couple of things. So we're gonna have this ambulance that's gonna be parked. And so with, does an ambulance, is that on like a trickle charge or whatever when it's not? Okay, that's my first thing, it's like, okay, we're gonna use it, it has a dead battery. So.
Every vehicle we operate is always on trickle charge.
It'll be kept inside, I hate to sound like a broken record.
State regulations require. Can't park it outside. And it's gotta be in a heated garage that maintains sixty-eight degrees. We, we, this is a very regulated business that we have little to no say about. And we're regulated two ways, and that's what you gotta understand. We're regulated by the state as far as how we operate. We're regulated how our personnel operate by our medical control agents at Yale, New Haven Sponsor Hospital program. And the billing is guided through the federal government.
I have a question. How much did the last refit cost, you opening a chassis on the light lit last?
Oh, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That vehicle today, brand new, out the door, would probably cost about two hundred and seventy. A van ambulance, and we priced it when we were down at the factory, a van as, similar to what AMR uses every day. Believe it or not, out the door right now, before July one, is about ninety-six thousand dollars. Pardon?
Then it'll go over two hundred.
Uh, by far.
The back of this ambulance would be something that could be retrofit? Or, or you think that, in other words, after two thousand fifteen, all this stuff is gonna either have to be?
No, they're gonna be grandfathered in.
Correct.
It's gonna have to.
Right, but they're only gonna grandfather for so long. You know, we all, we all live with government regulations, and they're gonna say, okay, you know, that, this is the first step, two thousand fifteen. And about two thousand seventeen or eighteen, they're gonna tell us, I'll guarantee it, I won't be sitting here, but you're gonna be back, or someone's gonna be back, say, oh, we gotta put these stretcher lifters on, on, or buy new ambulances that have them, because of the two thousand eighteen, everybody has to have them.
One, one of the, one of the problems that all the operators see right now is that device that would reduce worker comp claims, because you no longer have to lift, which does have a backup mechanism.
It's gonna weight down the ambulance, though.
Uh, yeah, exactly.
But.
But, more importantly, it reduces the amount of workroom that the EMTs and paramedics have in the back of the vehicle on sides of the patient. But we don't write those rules.
I can't believe that they're doing that, I mean, why fix something that's not broken?
I agree. I agree.
Stupid question, okay.
And, and believe me, when, when the regulations are subject to change, they seek input, and I give my input, just like probably any other service chief, and I guess it's just a courtesy. Any other questions?
I'm done.
Again, I, I just, you know, one last point here is that, you know, we, as Al said, we provide a great service to the community. Our personnel are very dedicated. While we're using this vehicle during the, the entire downtime, everybody really felt that it was a nice vehicle to have as a backup. It was comfortable to work in. And, and knock on wood, from a maintenance aspect, it wasn't down at all. So, the, the box is on, that's, this is the second chassis that the box is on. The box previous was assigned to an ambulance out of Norwalk Hospital. And it suits our needs very well. So I, it would be my recommended, recommendation, and the Board of Fire Commissioners' recommendation to spend the money wisely and let us put it into service as a third vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Ramford Town Council approves the purchase of a two thousand eight Ford Lifeline ambulance from Eastford Fire and Rescue for a final purchase price of four thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The funding of this purchase will come from the ambulance capital reserve fund. Furthermore, the town council authorizes the expenditure of the necessary body mechanical work, et cetera, at a cost of seven thousand dollars to get the vehicle ready for state. work, et cetera, at a cost of $7,000 to get the vehicle ready for state OEMS inspection, also to come from the ambulance capital reserve fund.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Calora?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Follitt?
Yes.
Okay. Item G, purchase of cooker for the Poco Festival.
Hi, I'm Brian Lynch, Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. I'd also like to acknowledge Victor Palma, Vice Chairman of Parks and Rec, as well as Dennis Pennone, who is here as the Poco Chairman. We encourage you to purchase the...well, we'll go back to our April 27 special meeting where the Park and Rec Commission recommended the purchase of a potato cooker to take the place of the one that we've had to rent the last couple of years. We've looked into the cost of it. We can purchase new at about $27,000 or refurbished at about $18,000. The commission recommended the expenditure of no more than $29,000, the funds to come from the potato festival monies. A lot of debate went on back and forth regarding new versus used. The used pieces of equipment are completely refurbished inside, new tires, axles, valves, burner...not burners, burners are the same, but pretty much gone over from top to bottom. We looked into the storage. Storage would be at the Public Works Department. It may fit in the trailer or may have to be covered and stored there. It would be insured as a piece of town-owned property. We looked into other potential uses of the potato cooker. We thought that it could be used in an emergency situation. We reached out to Mr. Buck and we've not gotten any information back on that. Board of Ed functions, Lynch family gatherings, touch a truck. Other towns, we may look into utilizing it for letting other towns borrow it or possibly rent down the road. I think Park and Rec has to look at, do we even want to let out our piece of equipment to another town? But I think we'll have discussion on that and then reach out to the town council for some guidance as we go forward. Chamber and churches. But I think we're committed to the Park and Rec agenda to make the potato festival go forward year to year to year and I think this is a step in the right direction. Worst-case scenario, if the potato festival doesn't go forward, these maintain their value. We're looking at a unit here that's used that's from 1998, I think, and its decrease in value is minimal at best as a used piece of equipment. So if indeed the festival has a longevity of another 10 or 15 years, we have a potato cooker that we were renting that was 40 years old, I think we've got some resale value down the road if we decide we don't need it anymore. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Anthony, what is the balance of the festival account?
Roughly $63,000 from last I checked.
And if we go, if we have to go with a new one, including delivery, what's the bottom line number on it?
If we purchase a brand-new one?
If there's not a used one available, what are you going to do?
We're assured that there are some used ones available. There's only one source for these in the country, as you can imagine. It's from Iowa and he has assured us that he does have some used units there or we can purchase the new. That's why we capped off at a top of 29. If by any chance there wasn't, we could purchase a new one for up to 29.
Does 29 cost and you have to pay $300 to deliver it?
Yes.
No.
No, that's...
Twenty-five, four.
Twenty-five, four, I'm sorry.
And then three, three, $200.
Okay, I misread that, thank you.
Franny could go get it.
Well, that was the other thought.
Cheaper than...
He's going up to Maine, let's send him out to Iowa.
So do they need a motion?
Well, we need to approve the purchase because it's capital and that was...so I would like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of a cooker for the potato festival at a cost not to exceed $29,000.
I'd like to amend that to say to purchase a new one and not to rent it to other towns. Do you accept my amendment?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And again, the motion right, right? I know, Joe, I'm just tired of it. The thing comes back every year. I'm like, you know what, let them buy a potato cooker.
My life's like lease cars.
Right.
My concern with this is, you know, again, it's my thing and I...we've got to find a way of peeling out the elements because like with the one across the street, I think that probably went in, you know, a deterioration. What can we do about that?
Well, I think there's two components to it. One, that one's about 40-something years old. I mean, I was told by Dennis tonight that they found it out in the middle of a field up by mountainside, wasn't it? Sunk in the mud and so they're pretty hardy. Granted, Franny's men have put a lot of time and effort into keeping that going, but to answer your short and sweet, I'm sure we're going to find some storage for it, especially if it's a new piece of equipment, we'll treat it gingerly.
See, my feeling for going new is, it isn't like it's a sand screening plant that we're looking at $75,000 difference, you know?
Agreed.
And, you know, the reason it's cheaper is because it's not 100% gone through and we don't know what is missed. So that's why I said, you know, buy the new one, direct department, put in enough, you know, approve enough wanting to get the new one and...but again, though, I'm serious about, you know, that's part of the motion, we're not going to rent it to other towns. There's no sense in doing that.
Or groups. I'm fearful of just...
Allowing anybody...
I think if it's something in town that, you know...
But who would run it?
Well, that's the other thing, but that's...
Well, we have Dennis here.
Yeah, you get a group, I don't care if they're a five...
We don't want people to be able to come in there and just hook up to it and tow it somewhere because, hey, I'm in town.
You know, Al, I agree. It was part of our presentation to you, as I had said earlier on, you know, this would be something the Park and Rec Commission would begin to discuss and we'd develop policies and procedures which with regard to the use of the potato cooker. The thinking was that if we're purchasing this piece of equipment for only four days of the year, how else could we best use it? And if it is this town council's opinion, we don't want anybody else to use our cooker. That's it.
Well, I mean, if they're town functions, they're fine, you know, like the senior...
Understood. The senior, right. Or Board of Ed.
Just to mandate that it should be run by an employee or volunteer of the town.
And I think all of that can be worked out and we'll come forward with recommendations as to who and who cannot, much like we did with our field usage permit.
All right. So the motion, I will amend my motion so that I authorize the purchase of a new cooker not to exceed $29,000 in that it is not to be rented to any other towns.
Okay. And that was seconded by...
Dan.
All right.
With this, obviously, we're talking about following through the...we still have to bid it even though there may only be one...
Send the bid to...
Yeah.
You had a 10-day window, you said is the shortest amount of time for the bid?
I think so, yeah.
So are the big documents ready?
We're working on them, yeah.
So you said this was from Iowa?
Yes, sir.
Did we check in Idaho?
Well, it's actually a chicken and rib cooker.
It is.
Oh, come on. You've got to go to Idaho.
It can handle 700 potatoes.
Or Maine, right.
All right. All right. Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Arman. Roll call.
Mayor Calora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, one more?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Follitt?
Yes.
Okay. Item...thank you. Item H, TVES roof?
Right. I handed out or passed out the summary of the bid summary of the four bidders plus this is, the other page is just so you understand the definition of the add-alternates, of the three add-alternates. So...
Well, I just wanted to let you know that add-alternate number three is wrong because there is no HVAC in the gym.
Say again, no?
Add-alternate number three says to replace the existing HVAC unit located over the gymnasium with a new HVAC. The gym does not have air conditioning.
I don't like that in high school.
It's the cafeteria that has the other, that was the other unit.
Does it unit be on top of the gym or the cafeteria?
No, it's on top of the cafeteria. Yeah.
I don't know what you're saying.
I mean, this was discussed many, many times.
They did that in the building committee meeting and they all were mandatory now.
Did they have a breakdown of how much the new central air conditioning is over the administrative office area was and the classroom wing or...
Well, it's only admin. The classrooms don't have air conditioning. It's part of that add-alternate two, the pitch roof is that whole front long section. So it's admin offices and then classroom sections, but the only part that's air-conditioned is the admin offices.
So, Al, if you don't mind the administrators cooking a little, say getting there from $22,000 to $50,000.
Well, no, the add-alternate three is the caf, is just the air conditioning unit in the caf.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, no, it's part of the pitch roof for add-alternate one and two. They include it.
I'm really tongue-in-cheek.
I know. I just...
I'll cook them for $22,000.
But it does make a difference as to what the cost of the air conditioning unit is in one and two because we have separate money set aside for air conditioning in our CIP budget.
Right.
So that really needs to, we need to know what that breakdown is.
Right. Tom Hibbard's reviewing, give us a breakdown of how those, the specific detail on that. I don't know, I haven't seen him, I haven't gone through it. We just did the summary and haven't reviewed the full detail of all the responses.
Well, I remember his air conditioning units for the library and the admin offices, his estimate was approximately $150,000 and then they threw another $40,000 on for the cafeteria, which is under except for the...
Except for number four.
Except for number four.
Yeah.
So we have $190,000...
Right.
Separate, separate from the TBS roof project.
Right, so...
So our best bid, including everything, is the two-four?
Right.
So if you say two-five, because there's only $40,000 difference between the two, so if you split it, it's 2.5 and we're at 1.7, so that's 800,000 and even using a 50% reimbursement rate is $400,000 that we need to...
We have a way to make it work.
Well, we had roughly $250,000 kind of...
Well, it's kind of like you must have had foresight when you made your votes at the council meeting.
What, the bathrooms? Putting the bathrooms off?
That whole column. Because to have the...sheet number one is the capital page as the book got printed. And then sheet number two talks about the changes that the council made. And look at the column that says, that other fun column, that's the one that talks about the NVIS money. Because even if you do it down to $867,000, return to the very last page in your packet and see if that breaks down on what happened to the NVIS money. If you go down to the bottom of that page and you see, basically going into the 15, 16 year, you had about $1,435. You've only allocated $837, leaving about $600,000 of the NVIS money. So go towards about a third of the way to the top, you see the TVES roof project, we estimated $1,720 and I was conservative on the amount of the state money versus the town money, but look in total of $1,720, if you add the $600,000 of the cushion that's left there and the $190,000 that Rose alluded to for the rooftop units, you have the 2.5 million to make this project work. And again, I'm 90% confident, 99% confident, I'll say that we're going to get more money back from the state. We're not going to pay them a dime. I have concrete evidence and I'm just trying to get hold of the right person to let them listen to me, that we're going to get some more money back on that deal. So if you look at the $1,720 again was the initial estimate on the roof project, this $600,000 that's left brings you to roughly, say, 2.3, the $200,000, you're at 2.5. It's miraculous. It's amazing. You are clear voyant.
So how bad is the roof leaking?
Well, there are already four areas that...
Do we have buckets and stuff?
Oh, it's leaking every day, even now when it's dry. We haven't had any rain.
See, because here's the problem, we went to bid late with this. All the roofing companies already have school roofs to do this summer when this went out. And if this was ready to go out in February, you know, we would have probably gotten a little better deal, but I think if we can, you know, I've always preached, we've got to fix the roofs. And if we've got the funding, I think we just have to do it. But in the future, get the bids out for summer in February. Get the guys when they're hungry, after, when they're done shoveling snow. Because right now, I'm sure every one of these guys has a school project they're going to already.
I don't know if they're going to do it. I mean, and they actually wanted the company that did the high school roof project, which was Ally Roofing, and I see they didn't even bid on this.
They didn't bid it, they're probably too busy.
They were happy with...
Have any of these guys, well, actually, there's only two really players, did either one of them ever work for us, commercial roofing or Titan Roofing?
I think Greenwood did.
Well, they're...
Greenwood, middle school.
Right, and that's a good thing, it's a good thing they're higher because I would have disqualified them.
I think Silktown is here a little bit, so...
Silktown was, I'm not sure if it's...
Silktown, we've seen their bids before. I don't know if they've done anything, though.
But did they do repairs?
They were, well, somewhere along the road.
They were.
Yeah, the library, I don't know, I'm not sure where the name comes from.
So here's a question for John. So we have bids that are $40,000 apart. Do you get in, like, so do we get in trouble if we, like, where's that, it's $40,000 apart on, you know, that much money? So do we get in trouble by if for some reason in checking them out, we really didn't feel comfortable with the low guy?
No, I mean, it's the lowest responsible bidder.
So we'd have to deem them or the architect or whoever would have to deem them unresponsible. But I guess my question is if you're...
I'll be irresponsible.
You wouldn't be eliminating these until we had a deal with the other?
Sorry.
You wouldn't eliminate anybody until you...
Well, they have to vet them off.
Well, yeah, sometimes you do go...
I mean, we could get rid of two of these guys anyway, but the other two...
Well, basically, did I hear correctly that all of them are over the amount that we wanted to spend anyway?
Well, that was just, it was our estimated cost.
Well, the base bid, the base bid was $1,720. I think the base came in like $1,777.
Number four, yeah.
Right, so the base component of it was really pretty close to the target. It was the add-alternates of the pitch roof. We know it's going to be higher from the beginning, it was like common sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had on the council a number of times a history of problems with roofs and roofers and people who put them on and people like yourself have become...
I don't know that there's anything wrong with either one of these guys. I'm just, I'm just saying that we need to thoroughly bet both of them.
And what happened with the high school roof project is actually the low bidder, he all of a sudden, before they signed the contracts, he says, oh, I forgot certain things and his bid went up, but we said we were going to hold them to the contracts on some things.
See, that's the other thing, Rose, this time of year, we've got these two bids that we can make work, we need to move on.
Well, they have to, because they have to get it done this summer.
No, we need to move on it before these guys say, oh, you know what, I'm out.
Well, Building Committee meets Monday night, so, so if, if it's the pleasure of the council that we're going to say, we're going to do all the add alternates and go with the pitched.
I, I think we need to.
And everything, then, the, it's up to the Building Committee then, then to go through, and they'll, I think in their discussion, they knew that they would award it by a certain date, because they knew bid opening was today on here, and then Building Committee meets Monday night, so.
Yeah, it's going to be a tight window, no doubt about it.
Well, and that's up to the Board of Ed then, as to what they do as far as if they run into problems, it's a wet summer, and whatever the issue, that's their issue as far as the opening of the school and everything else, but. But we just have to, I guess, make sure that add alternate three is not the gymnasium.
It needs to be spelled out correctly.
Because there is, there is absolutely no air conditioning in the gym.
Maybe they're putting air conditioning in the gym. Hold them to it. Do we need to vote on this, or?
Well, I think, don't we have to wait for the recommendation for the, from the permanent project?
Yeah, we still have to have Hibbert review.
Right. So, it'd be on our next agenda, they should have all that work already, ready to go on our next agenda.
Item 14, citizen statements and petitions.
Doug Lee Harrison, North Spie, North Bramford. I have a question. Rumor has it that the council is looking for bids to buy out the wall field down here for construction for developers, and is there any truth to that?
Yeah, we talked about that tonight, Doug.
Well, let me tell you, Al, you and Marie, about the only two I can really hear, and I thought you might have, but I couldn't pick it up, but my question is, is that true? You're going to bid this out to, to sell it to a developer? Because we've had several meetings with, over this, and there's a lot of people that want to keep wall, that wall field as a park. The only piece of land you got left in the center of North Bramford, or anywhere near the center, that could work as a park for the center, and you're going to give it away? Sell it? Because you want the money, you want the tax money. Well, you better start figuring out how to cut your damn taxes and keep some of this property. You got a property up here, a slab up on Route 80 where a building collapsed, why don't we get somebody building on that, get some tax money back on that? I mean, come on, you're going to sell the last piece of open space in the center of town, it was a playground, it was a park, it was a ball field, and it could still be used for recreational purposes. You're going to sell it? You're selling North Bramford right down to two. It's Route 80 deal, now the propane tanks, now the wall field, come on, what's this council doing? You're all from Northford, you don't give a damn about North Bramford?
Doug, we, I know we're not supposed to debate, but you're the only guy here, we, it, it's not a done deal, and believe me, I said the same stuff you just said, several meetings here. This, they put feelers out there to, to get a guy to come and see if anyone, number one, would want to develop it. Number two, how much tax revenue could come in? And number three, how much is it worth? And then it's going to come back to the council, and, you know, and believe me, they'll all tell you, I have beat it into them that there were a lot of people that don't want to develop it, and I went along with it, that, all right, let's see what proposals come in. And then there will be a debate amongst this council, and maybe there'll even be a public hearing.
I would hope so.
And so would I, to say, okay, folks, this developer X, Y, and Z, he wants to do this, we're going to get this much money, or we put a gazebo in there and a, and a park, but it, it's not, it's not a done deal. It's a, in the research and development stages, to just see what is it worth, and what could happen there.
Well, Al, we've had, over the last year, year and a half, two or three public meetings on it. You had a guy from Yale giving us big apartments with stores on the bottom, good God, we got stores vacant here, we can't rent, all right? And you're going to build more? What, because you want to get more taxes? Well, I tell you, start figuring out a little tighter budget. I mean, you know, you've got a lot of people screaming for stuff, you're building ballparks, you're building a lot of stuff for the kids, which I'm in favor of, but you know, there is some places where they, you play, you pay, and you better start thinking along some lines like that, in my opinion, because we, we put out, we've got football fields, I didn't want a second football field up at Auger Farm, or is that for sure? Come on, you want to play in a second, hey, why should I? I, I'm 78 years old, and I'm struggling. I didn't do a maple operation this year, I never will do another one, because I can't do, I can't put the labor into it. I'm having trouble laboring normal stuff, and, but my taxes go up every year. So, what am I going to do? Sell off some of the farm? No way. I'm going to keep it intact, and I'm going to sell it off as a, I'm going to, open space. Yeah, screw you out of taxes. All right? So, you know, what do I do? I, I can have the barn get struck by lightning, I'm not sure what the taxes are on, get rid of it, but it's usable. And I just can't see, my, my biggest problem is, is the development of wall field. I don't want to hold you any longer, but I would like you to really consider keeping that as open space, as a park. Even if you don't do anything to develop it right now, it could make a soccer field, it could make probably a small football field for smaller kids, it could be used, and I think the Recreation Department is looking for more places that they can use. Keep it in mind, don't sell us out, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, any further? All right. We already had executive session, a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call. Yes.
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 Who's my call?